And I'll call the special meeting of Anderson County Commissioners Court to order on July the thirty first, two thousand twenty-three at ten A M. So that a quorum is present. And the present Commissioner Mims is just called me and he's beginning in just a minute, so. All right, the first item on the agenda is consent agenda. And we have budget amendments. Do we have any bills? Excuse me, utilities crossing county roads?
No, sir.
Any bills?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, and we got to approve bills. We have budget amendments, number eighty-four through eighty-six. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Commissioner Dixon. This kind of tie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hill, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So. Our next item on the agenda is to hear from D R G Architects and considering take action on awarding bid for roof replacement to Anderson County Historical Courthouse. And Wayne? Thank you. You got some handouts for the court?
Judge Wayne Gondik from D R G Architects. Gary Adams also here with me. Steve Shadon from Garland Company is also here today. This is a follow-up to the the previous meetings that we had on the historic courthouse roof replacement that the court had authorized us to to go forward with the roof pricing through the Omni partnership co-op process. So what we have done is that we developed the drawings and specifications to define the scope of the work for the project. We put that together in cooperation with Garland and their products under the Omni co-op. And then I put that out for bids with the three roofing contractors. And what you have here today is is a response on that. I'm going to ask Steve Shad to sort of go over these numbers and add answer some of the technical questions on here. But I think we put together, Steve kind of listed here a summary sheet printed here. And we had two options on that is that there was a thirty-year and forty-year option on the replacement of that roof. They're basically the same base type roof. The difference between the thirty-year and forty-year is the top coating that's added to the thirty-year roof for the forty-year warranty on the roof. But that does take, you know, letting the roof cure and coming back and adding that top coat to that. So those are are the two numbers. One of the things that in in rough numbers, what we had established as far as our budgets for for those was, I believe about on the thirty-year roof, we were looking about seven hundred fifty, seven fifty-six, I think was the number on that. And then on the the forty-year roof is that that was in the eight hundred and twenty, twenty-eight, forty. Somewhere around in that number. So we're happy with where the the numbers have really come in at. And I'll let Steve talk a little bit about the the contractors here and their qualifications with you, if that's okay, Judge.
Thank you, Wayne. Yeah, so we had, we actually reached out, we're talking to Judge, we there was another contractor that has done work locally here as well. We reached out to them to get certified for this type of work, sent them all the paperwork, said, hey, if you'd fill this, all this paperwork out, we'll bring you, then we'll get you out to bid this as well. They just did not want to respond to paperwork. And so there was a there was a fourth contract divided, it just, there's no number there because there was no bid submitted on that. F W Walton, S and S and Bass, all high-qualified contractors. The reason that, you know, the these contractors have great reputation and, you know, sometimes it's, well, I would never take the low number. I highly recommend, you know, these numbers are solid. Feel free to, you know, take F W Walton as the as the labor side on the low number. All warranties are N D L. And what that means is there's no dollar limit warranty. So in twenty years, if there's a leak in the courthouse and it's fifty thousand dollars to fix, whatever, that warranty covers that. You'll never be pulling money back out of your own pocket to fix a leak in that courthouse. And that's, and then there's kind of any other details or questions we'll answer at this point. The difference between the thirty and the forty-year option again is you're going to have your vapor barrier to keep separated air conditioning coming up. You don't want that to drive into your insulation. You have insulation, bringing it back to code value, coverboard, and then two plies over the top of that. And then your forty-year option will be after ninety days of curing out, you'll come back and you'll skim coat over the top of that thirty-year system, and that's basically a wear protection coat, and that'll wear off over ten years. And then you're still left with basically a fresh thirty-year roof. And so that's how you get forty years out of a out of a system like that. Where the numbers came in, we don't always recommend the forty over the thirty, but seeing that the the numbers did come in solid, we would probably push to do the forty-year recommendation because it did come under what we were hoping for. But again, that's completely up to the court. Any questions that you have, we have an answer.
I know we talked about this last time y'all were here, but this is to go in and take everything completely off.
This is a full tear-off, and then this will be a full tear-off in the fact that they're only going to be tearing off in in a given day what they can put back waterproofed in.
Right.
So they'll never, it's not, we're going to tear everything off and then start.
Nothing exposed.
Yeah, nothing will be left exposed at the end of the day. The north side of the courthouse will will have a stair tower, so no one will be accessing through. We don't want anything tracking into the beautiful courthouse that it is. On the inside, so it'll be external up and down protecting there. Crane will be set outside, it's well roped off, protected. That way, no material is going to be coming in through the courthouse and tracking things. Everything will be accessed from the outside.
But nothing will be patched over.
But nothing will be patched over. That's correct.
You could comment on that, Steve. There are the on the four pediments, the peak entrances over that, there is some standing seam roof. That's not going to be touched.
That's a steel roof.
That's all, that's all in good condition. On the backside of the parapet, there are some metal panels that that's all coming off, and that's going to be repaired. On the the lower part of the rotunda, at the base of the rotunda, there's some metal panels there that that are coming off and all going to be re-waterproofed in. Notice that in in the rotunda area, there there is some moisture damage interior to the building, so we've seen that. We're trying to take care of all those things, but on the actual drum of the rotunda itself, we're not touching that. We're not touching the standing seam. But we're just trying to make sure we take care of all those connections there between the the existing dome, drum, and dam.
Just to reiterate that, if you look at your drawing on left, the the four sides that are shaded, those are your metal panels. Those will not be replaced because that roof's in good condition. And that yellow at the top, that's your copper rotunda with your capstone on it, that will not be replaced. There is a door also access through the rotunda onto the roof. That door is broken as well. This number includes fully replacing that door as well because what's the point of spending so much money on a roof and your door leaks? So we're taking all that into consideration to make sure that when this is complete, everything is locked down tight and you'll have no water issues.
What's the total square footage you have to repair?
Total square footage is, it's a hundred and twenty squares, so twelve thousand square feet plus your walls, plus your metal panels. So you're right around a hundred and hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty squares, you know, give or take a few. And so that's fifteen to sixteen thousand square feet. Just for reference, Van Zant County just did their courthouse. Theirs is roughly a hundred and ten squares. There came in, they selected the forty-year option, that's five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. They did that last year, so you have roughly fifty percent more. So that's just kind of, the numbers are in line.
Did all three of these companies come here to inspect these onsite?
Yes, we had a mandatory pre-bid. Everybody was onsite, read over the scope of work. The number one thing that we always tell is, no matter what, your pricing is your pricing, no change orders. The only thing that's bid in here is if when we tear it off, if there's something structurally wrong with the deck that you just can't see, rebars exposed, rebars rotted, there's a predetermined square foot number for replacement in there. So we're not here to say this is the number, and then every two weeks come back and say, well, there's this, and there's this. We have to add, this is a full turnkey number.
So with the, okay, so with the additional fifty feet that you say we have more than Van Zant County, and what you just paid, what they just paid for getting their total roof repaired and everything in there, all three of these bids basically really still came in line, even though we have one that's substantially lower than the other.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. Bass was, they were obviously a little higher, but S and S, and Bass is, you know, from a little farther away, S and S and F W Walton, they're actually closer. So, you know, that always figures into.
Yes.
But no, all bids are right in line, nothing, nothing stood out.
From an engineering standpoint, last question, from an engineering standpoint, your observation of that roof, you know, I know one half is better than the other half. Your recommendation to the court this morning on timeframe-wise?
So timeframe is, it always depends on when contract comes back, but if it's approved today, we'll get the material order in. That's usually a six-week time. So we're looking to start roughly the middle of September and to be done by the first week of November. Because obviously as winter storms come in and you get into November, December, you know, roofing just gets much more difficult to do. And weather-wise, so we're shooting for kind of that first week of November to be done. Now, that might be plus or minus a week, maybe a week early, maybe a week past, but that is, that is the timeframe we're looking at.
So if you take a scale of one to ten, and you being an engineer growing up looking at that roof, because we've hired you for your services to engineer and tell us what the dire needs of the roof is, what do you rate that roof, the condition of it now?
The condition of the roof now is failed. It's, you know, it's leaking, it's past its, it's past its life expectancy. It's leaking, not just in small places, but in multiple places. The rotunda piece, all the flashing, if you look down at this bottom right photo there, your flashings are coming apart. So, you know, you would spend six figures just trying to repair it. If you just came in there and patched, and then in six months you'd be doing it again. It's past its, it's past its life. And then the last part on this, all the roof was designed, wind load, upload calculations, everything, hundred, you know, hundred-plus mile an hour winds, all been designed to handle those, that type of loading, to make sure that nothing happened to this roof.
All right, so the second layer, essentially, if you put a thirty-year roof on, the second layer is for the forty years.
Yes, sir.
But that's going to protect the thirty-year roof, essentially.
Correct.
And you said you'd come back, what, six weeks?
So that's a ninety-day cure time from when they start, so, and sometimes it's a little less depending on the weather, but ninety days. So what they'll end up doing is, is all the material will be delivered, stored up there, they'll roof it for thirty days, they'll pull off of site. The roof will be completely done, there'll be no water issue. So if there's any work you'd like to be done, you know, that can be, and then after that ninety days, they'll come back, they'll take that material, they'll send a couple guys up, and they'll apply that material within no more than a week, and they'll be gone.
If there's, one of the things that we talked about is the air conditioner units up there, then all those, we're going to make sure that everything's functioning like it should be. If there needs to be repairs or replacement, then then there may be some things that we have to do with regard to air conditioner units.
Yeah, we'll be, we will have a full walkthrough before the project starts, inventorying and making sure what air conditioners are working, what mechanical equipment is working. The last thing we want to do is, something is broken, and then the roofing's done, and you say, well, this is broken, or, and it says, well, whose fault is it? We will document everything, make sure everybody's in a good space. And if something is broken, we'll bring it to the court's attention before and say, is this something you'd like to address at the same time? This is not working, it hasn't been working, it really needs an update here. That will absolutely be cataloged so that there's not some surprise issue at the end.
Any other questions?
Yes.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve F W Walton's bid. I'm going to suggest that we do the forty years so we get that extra coverage and protection, so.
Sounds a forty-five thousand difference, roughly.
Right, it's not that much difference to get another ten years. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the F W Walton bid for the forty-year roof, seven hundred seventy-nine thousand, five hundred thirty-six dollars. Do I have a motion? So move. Motion by Commissioner Hill, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mims, all in favor say aye. Aye, aye, all opposed? So.
And Judge, so obviously as we work through the contract, just that takes time, whatever, but we have a letter of intent here. If somebody could sign this, that way I can start working on the loan area.
Judge is signing for you.
Judge and Commissioner, thank y'all for for going through this process. And we do, from D R G, feel that this is a comprehensive approach to this. And, you know, as we go through the next step is obviously to to deal with the the moisture issues inside the courthouse. But that's the the next step that we want to, you know, talk about after we get this done and on the repair and the replacement of anything that's been damaged inside because of the leaking roof. So that's, we'll be back on that. But as Steve said, that we will have a pre-construction meeting and go over everything to make sure all the equipment up there is is working. And we'll give that, we'll make sure that y'all are kept informed on what is working there.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We need some rain, but maybe in all parts of the county except the courthouse.
I'm praying best.
Okay.
We'll work around the rain, we're not going to fuss about it.
Thank y'all.
Don't hold off on the rain.
Okay. All right, and I had, we don't have it on the agenda on the open forum. So Mr. Smith, I'm not, you've signed up for the open forum, but we don't have that on the agenda today. This was a special meeting, okay? I just wanted to address that. Mr. Kitchens, you signed up to talk about item number five. Just wait, I I just wanted to say that, so the court knows, when we get to item number five, I'll let you speak, because you you wanted to speak on that one, okay?
Item two, you want to ask me?
He had a specific item he wanted to talk over, it wasn't on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith, your item wasn't on the agenda, so you understand, it can it can be on another meeting, okay? Okay, I just want to make sure I was explaining that to you. Moving to item number four, is consider take action on instructing Allison Bass and McGee Law Firm to prepare proposed solid waste ordinance, taking impact assessment pursuant to chapter two thousand seven Texas Government Code, a notice of hearing on proposed solid waste ordinance, and authorize county judge to publish a notice of the hearing on the proposed solid waste ordinance. We've been working, you know, we've had some preliminary conversations about trying to implement an ordinance to make it work. If if somebody wanted to come in and buy a property right now and and put in a landfill anywhere in the county, they could, if we don't have an ordinance. So if we have an ordinance in place and they have to come to the Commissioners Court, right now they could buy buy a property next door to any neighbor in the county and put one in, and we got no say about it. So what what we were trying to implement is do an ordinance. So if they go to T C Q for a permit, then they have to come to us to get permission first. So I just want to make sure that if somebody wasn't understanding what that's about, that what we're trying to do is protect the citizens of the county.
And and this is something we started working on last year when we realized that we had Anderson County open up for basically what Judge said, for anybody to create a landfill on their property at any time. And we want to put in some kind of stipulations, some orders in place where, I mean, a person can't go buy some acreage and come up beside a new subdivision or someone's new homestead that they're planning on being there a long time and create a dump. Basically, that's what it is, so.
Okay, y'all got to copy the order, proposed order, everything you prepared for.
Okay.
We'll make sure everybody saw that.
So what we'd be authorizing today is for them to prepare the ordinance and bring it back to us.
Right, this order would engage them to prepare, go through the notice process, have the hearing, so we can implement the ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the order engaging Allison Bass and McGee Law Firm to repair a solid waste ordinance, a takings impact at assessment pursuant to chapter two thousand seven Texas Government Code, and notice of hearing on the proposed solid waste ordinance, and authorize county judge to publish a notice of hearing on the proposed solid waste ordinance. I'll entertain that motion.
I'll put it on the form motion.
I think Kenneth's beat you on that.
That's fine.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Dixon, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mims, all in favor say aye. Aye, aye, all opposed? So. Item number five is consider take action on approving the Anderson County broadband study and action plan with East Texas Council of Governments. And David Cleveland, the executive director for the Council of Governments is here. And just to kind of bring the court up to speed, David came to see me because I was on the C E O board to do a preliminary orientation before we started, which is required. So when he came in that day, he made me aware that all the counties had, were allowed to have five projects for broadband in in each of the counties. And and I learned that we only had one proposed plan. And so he he told me that what the counties were doing was putting committees together to make a decision of business partners, stakeholders in the community to take and come up with a proposed plan, right, David? Okay, and so what I did, and my question was, do we still have time to do something? And so what his answer was, I'll give you some grace time. So this, our meeting was in March the thirty-first. So I started working to put a committee together. He sent me a list of, you know, individuals that would that would be appropriate to put on the committee, along with some of the fiber optic companies. And so that's what I did. And we did that probably in a week, week and a half. Then we started working on it. And we had a commit, big committee meeting of most of all the people that were on the committee, some of them were on Zoom callers, you know, online. But so this was a, I've got a PowerPoint. Get my computer going. So that was, this is the committee members. And everybody, I mean, it was it was a team effort because we had to do this in a hurry. Anyway, so I'm going to kind of let David take the lead now. I just want to kind of tell you how we got here and then and let you kind of go through the process.
Fantastic, Judge. And then when we get to the project map, I'll hand it back off to you and Commissioner Mims.
And all the commissioners have copies of the the proposed new plan.
Yeah, so I'll go through that with you now. By the way, it's great to be with you. Good morning to everybody. It's great to be here in Anderson County Commissioners Court. I want to just recognize and thank Judge McKinney for his service on the Chief Elected Officials Rural Transportation Planning Organization Board, Commissioner Mims for his service on the Adco Executive Committee. These are volunteer jobs, so that means there is no pay. And they do an excellent job of representing the interests of Anderson County. And Judge, with your indulgence, I just want to recognize that upfront, and thank you both. I also want to thank you for your.
And also Commissioner Mims helped me get up to speed because he was pretty knowledgeable on the fiber stuff.
Yes, and I just wanted to recognize you all for your hard work and put together an outstanding community team that worked diligently on this effort. So with that as context, just let me tell you that, let you know what documents you have in front of you. The first document in front of of the court, and a copy is right in front of you all, is on the Commissioners Court here, is just the PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to go through that looks like this. The second document is the executive summary of the entire plan, which looks like this, just a few pages, seven or eight pages. The third item, just to make it easy, and then the judge and commissioner will have an item up on the screen as well on when we get to that, but it's a laminated project map that you can just take home with you as well. And so if you, you know, need to look a little bit closer to than what what's on the screen in a few minutes, you'll be able to do that. So hopefully we made it real easy for you, but.
That way, if they've got somebody asking questions about what the plan is, they've got a copy of it.
Exactly, and it's all right there in front of them, easy to follow, hopefully. One thing that you don't have in front of you is the the full plan. That's because it looks like this. It's a lot of information in here. The executive summary that is in your hands is at the front of this, and there's a lot of detail on each of these projects and so forth. But this plan, if you approve it today, is the one that will be posted on our website, and this full plan is the one with these identified six projects are the ones that will go after federal and state funding to implement if you pass the plan today. So with that, let me just go into the PowerPoint presentation then. And if you look on the very first page, Judge set us up really good on this. We, you know, we've really gone through two iterations with the former county judge and commissioners, identified one project. The new judge came in and said, hey, we've got some untapped capacity and capability here, and we certainly have some additional needs. So let's put together another local project identification team with wonderful stakeholders, many of which are sitting in the audience today. And I want to certainly recognize our I S Ps that are here as well, that were definitely engaged in helping us every step of the way as well. We couldn't have done it without them. So the goal was to take a look at what had already been done and see if we could supplement it with additional projects that would identify additional needs. It is, the strategy for East Texas Council of Governments is a two-phase strategy. Phase one is what we're really working on today, which is a local project identification team of local stakeholders get together and they identify. What we said, the goal was three to five projects for each of the counties, excuse me, and that addressed the most critical broadband needs to move broadband forward for the county. It's really important to know upfront when you're talking to the public about this, is that even now with these projects, if you approve them today, there is no way we're going to identify or or address every single broadband need that exists in Anderson County. But if you don't start somewhere, you'll never get the job done. So that's what we're trying to do, identify the top five. You'll say, well, how come there's six? It's because we gave you an extra project. There are some surrounding counties that didn't use their full quota. So toward that end, for the counties that needed it, wanted it, we were able to give an extra project to you all. So we had a two-phase approach that phase one is this local project identification team. I mentioned really quickly, phase two is got, there's another regional team that's working on a on a middle mile network for all fourteen counties in East Texas to connect all fourteen counties that any internet service provider could connect to and complete last mile service. You say, well, what are you talking about middle mile? Because now we're starting to talk to talk kind of I T geek broadband speak. No offense, Scott. But but just to to explain it really quickly, first mile service is when you start at the junction box or at the headquarters of the internet service provider, whether that's Charter, Bright Speed, A T and T, whatever I S P it is that you're talking about. Last mile service is when you're actually connecting the customer up to a live service and turning the on button so that they can get internet service. Middle mile is everything else in between. And so the theory is, is that if we get a middle mile network in place And so, the theory is, is that if we get a middle mile network in place for East Texas that any ISP can connect to for a published reasonable price, that will eliminate one of the barriers that our local internet service providers have in rural areas to bring in broadband home. This is the issue for rural East Texas. And that's the disadvantage that we have, is we have plenty of space, but we don't have very much density. And so, Dallas, Houston, San Antonio, the big urbanized areas, the return on investment that the ISPs can get for putting in new broadband networks and new projects is much quicker. So, we have to pull up alongside these ISPs in rural East Texas to help them address that need, and that's one of the strategies. We did not work on any of the phase two work at all. This is all phase one, identify local projects here, and we have six. And then, these six are, and then phase two is a process that will be ongoing and we'll come back to the court and talk about that a little bit later. If you go to the next slide, I've already expressed, explained this, that we really had two project teams.
Alright, let me, so, are we talking about the maps now?
I'm about ready to switch to the maps.
Okay, alright.
We had two project teams, one with Judge Johnson that identified the one, and then two, when Judge McKinney said, hey, we've got some untapped capability here. Let's see if we can go through and address some additional needs.
I just wanted to make sure that we took advantage of getting all five projects.
Exactly.
And then David told me that since some other counties were not planning that many projects, that we could go ahead and plan a six project. So, we actually, committee put a six project, six projects in, not just five.
Yes, sir. So, if you go to the next slide, this is where I'm gonna hand it off to the judge and the commissioner. You can see the locally identified projects, all six of them, in slide number five. And then I'm gonna hand it off to the judge to-
Yeah, let me, let me talk about this real quick because I don't wanna leave it up there a long time. All of the blue-gray area that's in there is gonna be Charter. So, those, those are already, some of that's already being done now because even on the court, we've been taking and approving crossing, utilities crossing county roads in all four precincts with Spectrum.
That's right, so they're not familiar with Spectrum. They're not familiar with Spectrum, yes, sir.
Yeah, and so, so, they, that area was covered. So, I wanted to, I wanted to put this slide up here, and I've got it blown up a little bit more. So, what we were trying to do is do the underserved areas that, that had not already been in a plan. So, the blue-gray area is actually being worked to a certain extent, but it's proposed. And so, you know, as long as that, the funding holds out and all that gets done, then those areas should be-
Hey, can we explain that one real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
That is a state-funded project right there, with some federal funding also. That is what they call the ARDOF. So, that is the ARDOF funding, where it had already been allocated to come in and to bring broadband in these areas. But what happened was, where they were looking at other maps before they started their project, they looked in, they thought we were all highlighting those other areas because HughesNet has access to that, and that's called satellite internet, and it's not true fiber. So, therefore, the utilities are not there. And this was a plan to come in to help connect up and to bring those up to par with hard fiber.
So, the next map is actually taking out Spectrum's footprint, okay? And what we were doing is, you've got Bright Speed, you've got E-Tex, Windstream, and leaving somebody out, let's see.
Well, you have, let's see, E-Tex?
And Spectrum, those are four providers that already have a footprint in our county. And so, all four of them were on the committee.
Yeah, Judge, I had E-Tex, Charter, Bright Speed, and there's one other one. Which one were we missing?
Well, I can go back to the list.
Yeah, oh, it's on the list.
There's the list. So, they're all over on the right side. Ed Stern was on the committee for Spectrum, Matt, and I think it's-
Windspeed and Bright Speed.
Oh, Windstream.
Windstream and Bright Speed.
Yeah, and Windstream is in the southern part of county, it's actually in Houston County too. Bright Speed is doing some in the city as well as some of the Westwood area, and then also in Frankston, they have a presence in the Frankston area.
Yes, sir.
Luke Sanderson was with Windstream and Scott Stringer, and he's here today with Bright Speed, so.
But some of the other services in those areas are not hardwired in. But y'all, are they gonna, are they gonna do that where they're running on the COAX?
And that's why we developed this plan, because once we realized those untapped funds were still there. It gave us access to-
So, that eliminate Windstream's deal where they're on the COAX cable? Get to their areas, or will it be?
Well, that's one of the questions we all came into, Mrs. Scott. We all had a, we're all sitting right out there talking about it.
I guess that's the only provider we've got, you know.
Yes, sir, same for South Anderson County. That's all y'all have is Windstream. And then you take Bright Speed, Bright Speed's gonna go from KU all the way around to Frankston. I mean, but they're not gonna, and Tucker, they're not gonna cross those lines. So, we can't exactly say what they're putting there, but we do know what ARNA is putting there and what we're gonna put in the ground, be true fiber.
But we're not breaking into their territory.
Well, we're gonna go into their territory, especially with the, some of the, there's three projects in the Windstream territory.
And the key is not, was not to cut anybody out. The key is to have a plan by the county that the COG has helped us develop so that as funds are available, then we can try to leverage those funds without a plan.
That's right.
We've got no opportunity.
And so, the COG's gonna go out for them and get them and say, once we approve, they go in, go get them. And say, hey, well, we got the funding there, get started.
But having the direct wire to the house, is that's what the problems are down there? Whenever the five o'clock hour comes, everybody gets on, slows way down, so.
Yes, sir.
That was kinda what, you know, see if our area can get away from that.
And we're gonna try to eliminate that.
But, did you have some other, I wanna discuss the projects themselves.
Well, go ahead on that, and then I'll pick it up after.
Okay, so, I don't know if my mouse works up there. So, if you look, Project One, let me go back to that first slide we-
Do you have the laminated copy, right?
Yeah, so, what we had with Project One, and Commissioner Mims had kinda brought this up. I wasn't aware that you could break a project in two, so, things we learned together. So, Spectrum had a presence in some of that area where you see the break. So, Project One actually starts near the city limits of Palestine and goes up one fifty-five, and then goes up three fifteen and comes back across to one fifty-five. So.
And what we did there was, you take, it was all, as Judge stated, it was all one fifty-five. That's all we did to make a connection from Frankston to Palestine. But, we broke it where it came around to three fifteen and it goes off to three twenty-one, and we came back down and come up because those are heavily populated residential area. And then at the top, if you go to Frankston, you come out down one fifty-five. And then if you go down three fifteen on the backside, you have a East Texas Crestone. You have a couple other big ranches, and they sell beef and a couple other home businesses out of that. So, we were able to break it down and utilize that to reach over on those sides where we can attack and still have Project One will be able to access business and residential.
And, as, most of the projects are business and residential. Project Three is primarily or is essentially designated as residential. And that's gonna be three nineteen down Red Town up in South Sycamore, three twenty-two area, so that you can see. But, everything else is essentially residential and business to try to, and of course, we've got a lot of businesses that are businesses from home that are internet-based. And so, we were trying to address those. And talking to the superintendents, they helped us identify in Slocombe and Elkhart area, some of the, and at KU, well, KU, Spectrum had a pretty good footprint in already. So, that's why the projects don't go up as far into the KU area. But Elkhart and Slocombe, Mr. Laster and Dr. Smith helped us to identify where a lot of their students were using even hotspots, and they still were not getting connected. So, we identified-
And that was our biggest issue.
Projects along, you know, eighteen seventeen from Elkhart all the way over to three twenty-three. And then, and then there was a, some of the Spectrum to the left of Project Four, just to the left of where that line is on the, near getting up to eighty, what is that, eighty-four? So, Spectrum had a footprint there, but to the right, there's a lot of white area where it's just no coverage. So, that's why we actually went, went all the way up to eighty-four on that. But, now, Project Two, it actually started, originally started at seventy-nine in six forty-five, went all the way up to Tennessee Colony, and then across three twenty-one to Montalba, up to Bodar, because there's some white areas, underserved areas there. So, we're trying to capture that, then back down nineteen to down around the Civic Center. And then, we were gonna split it, but we went ahead and made that other project from the Civic Center around the West Loop.
To Core Drive.
To Core Drive, and then outside Works Drive, to catch all those residences out there. Okay, then, of course, and I explained threesome, but three nineteen, there's fiber there. I've talked to Windstream about it, there's fiber that actually goes down two ninety-four and goes all the way out to seventy-nine and then goes over to Oakwood. But the thing about it is, it's not necessarily large enough fiber to be able to handle all those residences. So, we went ahead and planned this project. Dr. Smith was, I think, happy that we were doing that.
Yes, sir. If I may, one of the challenges?
If you wanna come up here, and if somebody on the committee wants to, you know, give their input or anything.
Yeah, one of the challenges in which we're facing is whenever we shut down school, mandatory by the governor, we want to make sure that we can educate our kids. And this was taking place throughout the county. And we're passing out packets, trying to get them to complete packets and then teachers' grade network, which we knew that there was a better way. And having internet access, being able to have programs from Kaplan to any type of media, type of instruction we want to occur, even face-to-face instruction with our teachers. We're bringing them in to have instruction, but our kids did not have access. So, then we went to the broadband piece, and passing out broadbands, we were paying significant money, anywhere from ninety to a hundred and twenty different broadbands we would pass out to kids because they told us that they didn't have access. They took those broadbands home and then have a satellite to connect to. So, therefore, our kids were struggling, getting further and further behind. And so, we were really grateful whenever the governor lifted the ban and said that we'd come back to school. And so, we identified the areas where we sent those broadbands out, and it had no connectivity. So, it was basically a waste for those children. And so, as we identified those places, we shared that information directly with Judge McKinney and so that he could begin to start charting those areas in which our kids needed assistance. And so, I'm grateful to know that we're able to help draw up the map and give input insight where our challenges are, hoping and anticipating that an agreement could be made where our students' needs would be met. Not only did we see the students' needs having difficulty, but we also saw the difficulty of our staff members having to stay at work beyond the time which they wanted to, giving up their free time with their families, and not being able to go home, cook meals, et cetera, interact with their children or spouses. And now that, if this goes through, we're hoping and anticipating that our staff members can be able to go home and work from home and address the needs of our students, which in turn impact our community at large. And so, we're hopeful and grateful that something great can happen for our kids.
Thank you. As Dr. Smith just stated, you know, we had our children in Anderson County. You could go to McDonald's, and you could see after school how McDonald's was packed because they have open Wi-Fi. We had all of our schools, parents who could drive their kids up to McDonald's or the ones lived in town who couldn't get into, letting their kids stay there for two and three hours to do homework. Me as a politician, I know him as superintendent, and other people here have been on the board and grouped together. That's not feasible, it's twenty twenty-three. And if we can come into a plan and something we can do to help our kids better educate themselves, whether the United States be viable, Texas be viable, why not we work on it? And I think that was the basis of this group, you know?
Three and four were actually, we got a lot of input from Superintendent Laster at Slocombe, if you could be here this morning, and Dr. Smith, because we were trying to identify, and we actually interacted somewhat with their IT people to know where some of the dead spots are on the hotspots that were sent out with the students. So, eighteen seventeen from Elkhart going over to twenty twenty-two, there it turns and comes back up to the school, and then Doctor, or Superintendent Laster identified kind of the extension of Project Four all the way up to eighty-four. And so, so that was, it was great to have that input because they already had interacted with their students, and they knew their constituents for the school districts and who had some of the businesses, home-based businesses that were gonna be affected. So.
The KU area that's left out, I guess it's up to top, that's where Spectrum's got their main hub.
So, we left that out.
Yeah.
Because Spectrum actually comes down two eighty-seven, just like you.
There's the map, and like you're saying, Commissioner.
One fifty-five.
Well, that's where their main hub, that's where they're feeding Anderson County.
They brought everything in that way, from Dallas, yes, sir.
KU hub, so that should be in good shape.
Right, that's why, if you look at just our map, then it really doesn't paint the whole picture. This is why I asked Ed if I could share this for Commissioners Court purposes, okay?
Correct.
Alright. Going back to this one, so, while we were in deliberations trying to see where we needed to go with the next project, one of the things we, and I heard quite a bit of talk about that during, even back during the leasing, people talking about the North Loop, how do we help, how does the county help the city develop the North Loop? Commissioner Mims and Chris Gibbs with the City Council, City Council members on our committee. And then Chris Trey in with PDC is here, and he was on the committee. So, through that input, we decided to add Project Number Five. Of course, we addressed in Project Number Two, the Northwest Loop that doesn't have fiber. And by Project Five, that kinda continued and got the rest of that covered, so.
Yes.
Chris, you wanna say? This is Chris Gibbs with our City Council of Palestine.
Yes, sir, good morning, Judge, and Court.
And I'll recognize that the new mayor's here too today.
Yes, thank you for inviting us to be a part of this group. And this is certainly really exciting, and in the same aspect where you said, David, about incentivization for the, incentivizing the ISPs, bang for your buck. We still have that real problem here. And so, Project Two and Five helps us get a bang for our buck in terms of, certainly from a city perspective, thank you, because it allows us to attract more businesses and developing that infrastructure. And those aren't folks that just live in the city limits, they live out in the county and come and support this. But really appreciative that, and as Dr. Smith had said, in Area Three, that gives us a very well-rounded approach to attack the county, but specifically from a city perspective and representing the city of Palestine. This will, we think, go leaps and bounds in helping, not just support the city, but the county. So, thank you for taking us into consideration and bringing that service in some of those white areas. This will definitely do that. And we have a higher chance of density in the specific area, Two and Five. So, that was our thinking there, thank you.
And truthfully, really, this is kinda like our, we got it labeled as Number Five, but this is our sixth project, basically, because as Mr. Cleveland stated, we could get five in there, and then some counties were able to get a sixth. And then when, actually, you know, I wanna drop my own horn, when I brought it up to the group, the panel, I said, you know, for a business standpoint, from the North Loop's perspective of our biggest city, city of Palestine, the hardest problem they have is attracting businesses, there's no infrastructure. So, we figured this would be a great plan to start, to helping them get all the utilities they need, starting from, as Judge stated, the Court Drive all the way out to North Side. And if we can get covered down to one fifty-five up to North Side School, that North Loop will be totally developed, except for the city coming on part with their water. And I'm pretty sure they could come up with that if somebody goes out, wanna purchase and bring a new company in. And there we go. As you stated at one of our meetings, Mr. Cleveland, what did you say about that earlier?
About?
Uh, this project here, and what a great aspect it would be for.
Yeah, number six.
No, I'm, I, I'm really glad that you, you mentioned that because that, that's really key. Um, you've heard it discussed through, in this discussion. Uh, this morning, uh, references to, um, business service and residential service. The beautiful thing about the plan that you all are considering today is that the vast majority of these projects, save number three, are what are called blended projects. And the judge has made that clear. They serve both residences and businesses. So when you're talking about, for instance, project five. I think and Kristoff, uh, can, can speak to this. The money that's underwriting most of the cost of, um, this broadband planning effort for East Texas is from the Economic Development Administration. We got three hundred and seventy-five thousand in, in grant funds from EDA for this process. And EDA is a business agency. So the grant requirements are that, that we address business barriers to broadband access, adoption and use. And we got, uh, permission from EDA to have one pure residential project as long as it somehow addressed telework because of COVID. So we were able to do that, but there's nothing in the grant that didn't say we couldn't do blended projects that serve businesses and residences. So we had heat maps up when we were doing the planning where we could see where the businesses and residents were and we tried to get, uh, the job done. In terms of serving both businesses and residents. So my understanding, and Kristoff can speak to this much more, that project five. What's really exciting about this is we're losing businesses every day in East Texas and Anderson County because they don't have. The broadband access that they need to be able to, to, to do, uh, to, to produce the product or service that they produce. What you're doing with project five is addressing one of those, uh, big needs that will, uh, result. In more businesses being able to locate and create jobs as well. And we're addressing residential needs as well. So I think this is really exciting. And Judge, I don't know about you on the court, but when you see this kind of community involvement. In this process, this is exactly what we designed it to be is grassroots, bottom-up, because you all know where the needs are. And so, um, from my perspective as the ECOG executive director, I don't, I, I don't think you could come out in any better place, any better position.
And I recognize, Mr. Satterwhite, KU is here.
Appreciate, uh, you want to speak to my IT guy?
You, can you come up to the mic? And this, this is for the clerk. Cause he's, see, uh, he keeps letting me know that he can't hear on the tape when, when they're doing the minutes. So. I'm trying to respond to his requests.
Uh, my name is Dr. Joe Satterwhite. I'm superintendent KU guys. Dee, uh, this is our IT, uh, director. I'm Mr. Eric Grimes. And, uh, and he spent a good bit of time on the committee. I wasn't able to make the committee meetings, but, uh, he was involved in them and, uh, you want to speak to your experience?
Again, I appreciate the opportunity. Um, it's, it's huge for us because again, we have a lot of students and teachers that. Um, we're having to actually park in our parking lot just to get wifi, like you're talking about McDonald's and stuff.
Yes, sir.
Um, I appreciate Charter Spectrum, uh, Bright Speed, uh, already having us in mind, um, goes a long way.
And, and, and they do. They, they drive up to the parking lot. They sit in there. They'll do their homework a lot of times because it's twenty, twenty-five miles to get to McDonald's.
That's right.
And so, so out, out in the rural areas where we are, uh, it's important and, and, and they'll find a way to get it done, but it's, it's helpful. And we're appreciative that, that our area, uh, was covered and, uh, support the plans that, that are there to further expand off into Elkhart ISDs, Slocum ISD, et cetera. Thank you for involving us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for participating and your input.
Judge, you got to do number six.
And then number six is, uh, when, when we got through with the other projects. Uh, there's an underserved area down south of Elkhart going down towards county line at Salmon and back. I think that was twenty twenty-two. Wasn't that right, Mr. Laster?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And then back twenty twenty-two going back towards the Texas. So, uh, we decided to go ahead and put that, uh, that six plan in there and, and, uh, like we talked about, some of the counties weren't, weren't doing all five and. We'll, we'll be glad to take one of those projects and put it in ours. So, uh, that, that's how that came about. So. I just, uh, I think it was a great work group. Everybody participated and we had good input and, uh, a good outcome. So. Now it comes to, did, did you have anything else?
Well, just can I, uh, make a couple of closing comments before we hand off? So if you, if you look at the, the grand total, uh, so on your, uh, look at your highlighted, uh, 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 laminated map, uh, that we provided for you. You can see on each of these that it, that, that has the actual prescribed route in each of the projects and then the purpose. So for example, example, project one is, uh, the purpose is to provide fiber-opted high-speed internet to unserved and un- underserved businesses. And residences in rural areas and unincorporated communities along state high one fifty, highway one fifty-five and farm to market three fifteen. So the public can clearly see what we're trying to accomplish with each of these projects. You can also see that our residential, the judge talked about this a little bit, but this is a purely residential area and we use this. Uh, to really build, because isn't this right, Judge, that we believe that there's going to be, uh, a lot of telecommunity in this area? And so this will be, uh.
And two or three?
For, uh, uh, our residential project. Is that correct for project three?
Yes, you're in three. I know I had somebody that lived on three nineteen that contacted me and did not have, uh, good internet. It was very concerned about it. I said, well, we're working on something, but I can't.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's medical plaza right behind the hospital, hospital.
Yeah. So that's where, uh, project three really focuses on. And if you look at the bottom line, then we're, we're looking at a hundred and fifty-six point one total miles of fiber. As a result of these, uh, projects, the total estimated cost for all six of these projects to implement is just over, just about twenty-two million, twenty-one seven. Uh, to be able to implement that. And so what we're asking you to do today, Commissioner's Court, is. Uh, to, uh, if you, uh, by acclamation or by action, the Commissioner's Court approved this, uh, revised and updated pro, uh, plan that includes these six projects. That will set East Texas Council of Governments free to, uh, begin the process of identifying federal and state grants to implement these projects. So we're not asking for any money today, but, um, the next step when we go after these federal and state funding. And we expect millions and millions and millions of federal funds coming down over the next three years for this process. But when we identify pro, uh, funding for some of these projects, that, those always require some kind of a local match. And at that time, uh, when we're, uh, when we actually have a grant, uh, that can match one of these projects. That's the time that we can, uh, work with you all, with the city and the county and the other stakeholders. Figure out how we'd come up with that local match for each of these projects. But today we're not asking for any funding. As the judge had mentioned, we're asking for your approval for the plan so that we can go after the funding to implement over time.
It's so, with that being said, um, if anybody keep up with our state, um, information. State of Texas actually just week before last approved more money for broadband in their, in their, in their packing budget rolling out for the twenty-four, twenty. The new fiscal year is going to start. They're going to put in, uh, more money in broadband. That's their biggest aspect. And it came from, uh. Uh, the higher appraisals where they raised more, uh, uh, fund balance for the state, but they're going to give it back to the counties as far as broadband. And this will be one aspect where it will give them the opportunity to reach out and try to get those funds forward to bring them into Anderson County where we can get this. Twenty-two million that we'll need for this project done.
What's anticipation of how long would that, these grant processes? Do you have any idea?
You know, trying to predict the federal government's behavior is a near impossibility on these matters. And then, you know, there's also, um, uh, struggling and arm wrestling going on, uh, uh, over FCC maps, the broadband development office maps that's slowing down the funding. So I honestly think if they're planning on, um, these, uh, various grant problem, programs coming over the next three years. You can probably double that and it's going to be probably somewhere around five or six years to, to, before we, uh, get it all figured out. Because the government is always slower than they predict. That's a good guess, don't you think?
That's correct. That must seem to be a big question.
Yeah. And then this was, I think the spectrum, if I'm not mistaken, the spectrum, they're going to start lighting up, uh, actually today. Projects that they've already identified done. And by the end of this year, that other blue that actually Judge is showing at the moment. Their projected plan is to have all of that lit. So it would be great if we could help intercede and come in between. Those white-gapped areas and help bring it where we'll have all of Anderson County lit. Yes, sir.
And if we're somewhere there already are, just.
Yes, sir.
Live competition, help there for.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So I got you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'm good.
You get to last one.
I want to ask.
Oh, yeah, oh, Mr. Dixon's got a question.
Okay, the white area is what y'all trying to cover. You said Spectrum is what's in the blue now?
That's the blue-gray area.
Okay. These white areas, who, is there a company that's dedicated to certain areas or all four of these companies y'all talked to? Cause I'm looking at one white area there and it's right where the alcohol plant was located. Of course, we know someday we'd love to turn that into more than, uh, something else. But I know the line already runs up seventy-nine, the fiber optics there, but could any company come in to hook them up or will it be dedicated or regulated?
You're talking about where ETX came in seventy-nine?
No, uh, yeah, ETX come down seventy-nine.
ETX is came from Jacksonville.
Yes.
Down seventy-nine. So that's what you're talking about.
Yes, sir. I think I have a question for Scott.
Will?
Judge, I would say from a council of governments perspective, we're provider agnostic. We really don't care who get, does the job as long as they get the job done.
That's, that's.
Will they be able to tap on to the line that's existing now?
Yeah. And then, but, but I will tell you from a common sense standpoint, if I can use Scott as an example. If Bright Speed has, uh, infrastructure all surrounding that project, when it comes out to bidding for that particular project. They should have, uh, leg up on any other provider and be in a great position to be able to win that bid. But, uh, when you're talking federal and state funds, all these projects have to go, uh, uh, you know, up for an open competitive bid.
Right.
That's what I was getting at, just.
Yeah, he wanted to make sure, because we, we're putting in some bid, there's some businesses that are going into county. Where, where he's talking about around the alcohol plant. And so that we. At least are including that as a prospective, uh, area where we might need some fiber to be connected to what's already there.
We run across that, yes, because we run across it with a small business.
Yeah, I know.
Already.
Yeah, I may be wrong, but I believe they can tap on to it. Uh, I, I believe it will be. And I think that's something later after court we can get with Scott. He can give me answers. So one could tap into.
Uh, that's just what I was, that it can be taken care of.
Yes, sir.
The reason he's asking that question is we have a business right now that we're concerned about. That the fiber is close to them. And I've talked to Scott with Bright Speed to see what they can do to address that. So.
And they'll need, they'll need plenty of.
Okay. Alright. Thank you. David, thank you for all the work. Tell Michelle that.
Thank you, Dave.
Her maps really helped a whole lot. She did a good job.
You're welcome. And, uh, can I recognize two of our, my staff that are here in the audience, uh, Lindsay Van Gil. And these folks have been part of the broadband team, uh, Lindsay since the beginning and, and Rebecca, Gage.
Yeah.
For, for many, many months.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, ladies.
Can everybody that was a part of the committee or, uh, just so the court can see that was, uh, that helped put this all together? Can y'all stand up, Jesse? Don't be bashful. Okay.
Thank you.
That, that's coming next. But, uh, we had somebody that wanted to speak, Mr. Smith wanted to speak, uh. Rick, with regard to this. So before we make a motion or take any acts.
Mr. Kitchen.
Mr. Kitchen.
It's kitchens.
Was it Mr. Kitchen? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Mr. Kitchen. I'm looking at the wrong paper. If you want to address the court on, on this topic, Mr. Kitchen.
Honorable Judge, County Commissioners, I'm just a resident. I don't have any business or anything else anymore. But it is a necessity nowadays to have that internet service, whether you're a resident or a business or whatever your, your thing is. What, what we have is with our taxes that we pay, which they keep going up. I just want to say that, uh, I think some of that money should be on this project here. And I'm all for it. And I know the residents around my area, uh, Dr. Wilder is my neighbor across street. Uh, our county commissioner, Joey Hill, is in my precinct. And, uh, I just want to say y'all keep doing what y'all doing and we appreciate it. As a resident, I appreciate y'all trying to get this thing done. Thank you all.
It's a team effort. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe so. And I, I apologize for addressing the court in my shorts. It's a hundred degrees out there and I'm going to be comfortable, so.
We're probably right there with you, Mr. Kitchen.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, broadband study and action plan. With, uh, East Texas Council of Governments for the six projects which have been outlined, uh, by Mr. Cleveland today.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Chapin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Thank you, everybody, for all their work.
Thank you.
Uh, item number six is consider to take action on approving additional forty-three, uh, hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents for installation. Generator for Montalba Water Supply Corporation. Well, number two to be paid from American Rescue Plan Act Funds. Uh, this was actually approved in court back on March the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Is there any questions? No, no. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dixon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Item number seven, consider to take action on approving a memorandum of understanding between Anderson County, Elkhart Independent School District. Which calls for both authorities to establish and maintain a coordinated program for, uh, enhancing emergency operations, uh, planning response. And Dr. Smith is here. Uh, we've been doing this with each of the school districts as emergency management's worked out those agreements. Uh, and of course, all the school districts had to come up with emergency action plans. We got any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the MOU.
So moved, you know.
Motion by Commissioner Mims. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chapin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Uh, item number eight is consider to take action on approving reimbursement in the amount of one thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars and forty-four cents. To Tucker Volunteer Fire Department for repairs to a brush truck with approved, uh, American Rescue Plan Act Funds. And of course, this is from their, uh, from their lot. Is there any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, the reimbursement.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Dixon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Item number nine, uh, consider to take action on quote from, uh, Synergy Technology to perform an audit for Anderson County. I think Commissioner Chapin and Commissioner Dixon asked for this to be going on.
Yeah, we've been working on it. We're, we got, uh, Mr. Prince here today, if there's any questions for him at all. It was, uh, quote from the Synergy Technology to do just a full, um, study, just a, uh, audit on our IT system. For Anderson County, just to be able to see where we're at exactly, just to ensure that we've got everything in place.
Well, I, I mean, I, I'm not knowledgeable. No, I don't know anything about this.
Well.
What, what's the man's name?
Mr. Prince.
Kenny Prince. Hi, Mr. Prince, can you come?
Kenneth and I worked on it, Judge. We couldn't include you in on that. You know, it would not be right for the three of us to discuss it.
Oh, I understand.
We decided to do that.
I understand.
Take that, so.
But since I'm the elected official over IT, I'd like to understand what this is about, what brought it to bear. Uh, why, why we're asking for this and, uh. The IT department was not included in it. The director or, you know, the IT department should be included in anything that we're doing. And, and so, you know, what, uh, why, why are we suggesting this? And I've got some concerns, so.
Okay. Well, I can answer. Uh, we've discussed this in other deals that I know nothing about IT. You said you don't know a lot. I think Mr. Hill's admitted that, that we don't know a lot. We've seen issues in the last couple of years where we brought a company in. They identified a lot of problems. We didn't know we had, our IT department didn't know we had. We're going through some transitions right now. And we was told through the IT department they had to look at. We're going through some transitions right now and we was told through the IT department they had to look out at other companies to see about securing our data off-site. Hadn't heard anything about that. We talked about doing a committee to help make sure IT department was right. Well, we're just looking around at companies. Uh we found Mr. Prince here with this. And what they can offer us, uh which I wouldn't think would be offensive to nobody, is they can come in and look at our IT department and do checks on it to see where we stand. If there's anything we're falling short on, if there's anything we're not doing as a court to protect the citizens of Anderson County, to protect the employees of Anderson County, and to me, it's kind of like insurance policy. Let somebody from the outside, just like outside auditors, come in and audit our auditor. To have someone come in and look at our system and if they come back and tell us this is great, we can continue on and keep running. But if they identify some problems, it might be some problems we need to address. So that's what we spoke to him about. This is what his company does. Uh he brought us a proposal as to what they would do in this audit and what the price would be and what information we would add.
Okay. So in 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 personally, I don't have a problem with a company coming in here and doing an assessment of, you know, where we're at.
Yes, sir.
And even making suggestions, but Mr. Prince, just to make you aware, okay, we're going through a transition right now. We're working with our attorneys. And until we get through the transition with our attorneys right now, it would jeopardize our legal position for anybody to touch our data, okay? And and I don't know that you're you're even aware of what we're going through. But we had a company that was here. We had no contract with them. It was a verbal agreement. There was nothing to determine whether or not what our, what the parameters were between the county and that IT company, okay? There was nothing to protect our data in place. That's why we're going through this transition right now. We're working from our attorneys with their attorneys. We keep requesting things and they're not responding to our attorney now, okay? Until we get through with that, if anybody comes in there and touches our data, it jeopardizes our legal position. And I haven't had a chance, our attorney is on vacation, so I haven't had a chance to talk to him about that. I think you could understand that. The other thing is to make the court aware of some things that are going on. Because y'all gave us a position, okay? You gave us a a new position. In the first two weeks, and we hired, we had somebody that applied back in December that had some of the skills that we needed, okay? In the first two weeks, because in in so I bring you up to speed a little bit. You know, we did a grant for the shares, you know, for half a million dollars, okay? So that company was supposed to send two of those Toughbook laptops to us. So our IT, to our IT, uh our director, assistant director, could configure those and build those computers to our specs to match with the shares department, what they need, okay? So then they were gonna take those two laptops, send them back to the company, and all the other laptops they were gonna configure and build out. So our IT staff didn't have to build all twenty-four computers that were going in the patrol room. They didn't do that. They shipped them all to the shares department. They all came in. So we couldn't send them back and none of them are configured. So in the first two weeks of this new person helping us, we were able to take and build out twenty-four, not only twenty-four Toughbook laptops, because the man, the day that he started, the the man that showed up at the shares department to start installing the computers, he wouldn't have had a computer, but maybe one or two, and he was doing three a day. Now, all twenty-four of those computers were built out. And sixteen computers that need to be deployed, that's been sitting back there that they needed to configure and build out for the offices, he sit did sixteen of those computers and twenty-four Toughbooks. So it made a difference because I could see in in this last few weeks, since they had a little bit of help, they were able to take and they were able to uh the finish up on the quotes and we're fixing to present these to court. They've been working on stuff that I've had them directing that we needed to do. But the first thing before we enter into any agreement with a vendor is we need a vendor policy. And the court agreed that we needed a vendor policy. So they have been working with uh with other counties. I directed them to get with other counties or to get with whoever, resources with DIR to come up with a vendor policy. Now, I'm letting you listen to this, so I'm gonna get a little input from you, okay?
Sir.
Since we hadn't had a conversation. So we needed, before we do anything to enter into any agreements with anybody, we need a vendor policy to protect our data. And they have a new person that TAC is employed that is an IT specialist for cybersecurity. He's brand new, he just started. I talked to him. I've uh uh I talked to Todd Kiesel with the with TAC Risk and he told me about him. We've uh I met him at the conference. We had some conversations at the conference. As soon as I got back, I got Mike to send, Mike a text to send him that policy so that he could look over it and make recommendations to see where we were at. He made one suggestion. Other than that, he thought it was looked pretty good. I'm sending it to Andrea Beard, who's one of the attorneys with the risk, with the risk that I think y'all met before. And then I, after we get it back from the from Andrea, then I'm gonna send it to Eric McGee, our general counsel, and Allison Mitchell to see if they have any suggestions. So we're going through a process. So it looks pretty good to me. So the next thing, and probably on the fourth, I think our next meeting's on the fourteenth, in the 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 regular meeting.
Yes, sir.
So I was preparing to have that ready. Also, they've taken quotes on disaster recovery. I think you you're gonna be very pleased. They're not two hundred thousand dollars like the last company quoted to us, over two hundred thousand dollars. It's gonna be eighty or or less for the, and we've got like three quotes and some of them are better than that. But it's all encrypted, all the data is encrypted on the fly. It leaves there, it's encrypted, it's stored offsite a long ways from here. It's encrypted while it's stored and it's encrypted when it's coming back to us if we need it, if something happens to our system, okay? So we've been looking at uh uh we've had meetings with the shares department, we had a committee meeting with the shares department with our IT staff, and they had a vendor come in on, it's uh through DIR, they can take and replace our camera system with a very nice, high-tech system, okay? But we're getting into the budget and then I wanted to, some of those, we've been trying to see how we can put that in the budget. So all of that comes together for some of our budget processes, okay? So it's not like, we're trying to get the information together so the court can act, but I don't want anybody touching our data with what we where we're where we sit right now until we get that vendor policy in place. And then the other thing is uh and of course our our person with the IT resigned this morning. So we're we're, I have reached out to the director of the uh uh Computer Sciences at UT Tyler asking him, you know, he said send him a resume, uh send him the job description. But I was trying to reach out to some of those people to find out somebody that's that's newly trained, coming out of college, that might be interested in taking that position. And so in in interim, we had somebody that wanted to go part-time. We talked them into working for six months and uh and and then maybe go part-time after the first year just to build out computers and do some of that hardware stuff. And I'm, I mean, I mean, Mike, tell you, he's been building out computers. We got, we got some, some things done.
Like I say, there, I know there's things that.
So I just want, so we're all on the same page and it's the same thing. I can't come and talk to one or two or three of you at a time, okay? I'm trying to make sure that I do that to protect the court so somebody doesn't, you know, start making allegations or anything. I'm trying to protect the court as well as myself.
And I hope y'all understand that.
Yes, and I do, that's where I fall under this. I think it's definitely the responsibility of this whole entire court to protect all the information we have. And I don't like it that it falls on one man's shoulders because I said it's a big responsibility, you know that, you're doing a lot with it. But one thing I didn't understand to start with, when you started the conversation, you said something about our attorneys and stuff. That's something I haven't been made aware of as a court member, that there's something else going on with our attorneys and our IT. That would put us in jeopardy.
This gentleman right here, if we're considering what what y'all have put on the agenda, then he needs to understand this too. They have our data. It's a cloud company. I always ask questions when I hear about a cloud company, is who's running the cloud, okay? Are they vetted? Have they had criminal backgrounds? Or that, you know? Who does, who are they having relationships if they're, and the one that we had was actually, it it was advertised as doing business in in Mexico and Canada. I have a concern about that. So all those things play into making sure the 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 data is secure for our taxpayers and our employees and our systems are protected.
That's exactly what we're approaching this.
Because we're getting no feedback back on the uh security side of it, you know, and as uh oh, Commissioner's courts gonna pay the tab on it, so it's our all responsibility. It's not riding on one man's shoulders.
And we're coming, we're coming up to budget. But y'all see that I've been working to try to get processes in place to bring that information to the court so we can make decisions. So it's, but the thing is, I can't sit here and have a, I can't visit with one or two of you at a time.
You can put it on the agenda and we could be talking more about it. We've asked you to bring the companies to us. You had said in some of our workshops, you'd bring us some reputable companies to look through, to go through, the plans through, but we've heard nothing about plans. So through this process, we thought to protect Commissioner's courts, uh the liability we have to it financially and for the people of this county that their their data is protected, that we wanted somebody to look at it and tell us besides just what we've got in-house.
Well, I don't think there's anybody, and I think y'all agree with me, there's nobody else on this court that wants to protect our data more than more than than I do.
That's where I don't know why that would be. And like I said, I'm not claiming to be a specialist in IT. Why be a problem with a company? Because we've talked to Mr. uh Prince and I think we should let him speak for me. You've heard some of our concerns.
Certainly.
Maybe we can shut up for a minute and let you speak.
Thank you for having me this morning.
You have the book there. What they represent, I mean, the reason, one of the ones, reason why you and I had chose them from it.
Uh there's several companies or several entities that they represent. And uh they represent the city of Elkhart, the city of Emery, the city of Frankston, the city of Grand Celine, city of Palestine, city of Wheels Point, city of Van. That was part of their dealings.
Part of our our city government, county government um relationships that we currently have, that we do all of their IT for them. All of our twenty-two technical staff here in East Texas are all CEGIS certified, background checked. Um no felonies, any issues like that with any of our personnel, including ownership, salespeople all the way down. We have almost forty employees total. What we're proposing in in our quote is is to do an assessment. It's, we will not be affecting data. We don't, we don't look at your data. Uh we look at your your hardware systems, we look at your infrastructure, we look at your firewalls to ensure that they are uh what actually they have in them, how old they are. Um you know, if they're up to date on patches, on on antivirus, if they're up to date on their uh various uh software applications that are installed on them. That's on each individual PC. We'll we'll look at every one of them. We and we have software tools that provide a lot of that for us, industry standard tools, along with our technical expertise to 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 bring that to bear. We produce uh extensive reporting uh as well as a summary report. We present that in person to whoever the designated person is or persons that you like us, we can present it here even to the court uh just as you did earlier with the uh ETCOG report. So we can, we can provide all of that solution. But uh in addition, we don't have pricing on it, but we we've, since we, we're in a hurry. I was on vacation last week myself and uh so whenever I produce a quote, we get and get get the numbers for the uh additional penetration testing that would be an external test. We believe, based on what we think you would probably have, that would be an additional fifteen hundred dollars to the eighty-five hundred dollars. But once we do the internal test and look at all the internal vulnerabilities that may or may not be there, we would then better determine whether we believe that you would need an external penetration test even done. So uh if we find a lot of uh vulnerabilities on the internal scanning, um then that may determine then what would more we might need to do, if anything.
Well, something that we've been having a conversation with is exactly what you're talking about. Because IT staff has no problem with somebody doing what you're talking about doing, to do an assessment on our vulnerabilities. We have no problem with that, okay? It, but but I can tell you what I told them. We're not doing anything with any outside company until we have a vendor policy in place. I think you can understand my concern.
Okay, can I say something, Judge?
Yeah.
Oh, you know, I think, I thank you for giving us an update on everything that you were saying while we were going to explain it to the court. I'm like, Mr. Dixon, I do understand now that there may be some possible litigation going on with our old IT. And uh that's my first time really hearing all this too. I don't want to like just put all that out there, just leave it alone, let it go there. But you did bring us up to the fore on some of the stuff that I think Commissioner Chapin and Dixon and Commissioner Hill, all of us kind of had questions and need to hear. So we wasn't brought up to date with some of the stuff that y'all are doing. And it's good that you brought it to us. I am with Commissioner Dixon and Commissioner Chapin over here as far as I think we do need to have some kind of a a a full assessment or, and I'm with you on the vendor policy too. Uh but at the time when I first got this off the agenda, that was my first hear of it and just like they said it, they couldn't go past this them two, so that was it. And once I got off the agenda that this was coming up, I actually uh later on, since Mr. Cleveland was gonna be here, we talked to Mr. Cleveland also. And it's no offense to Mr. Prince or anybody, but um uh the COG, now that I'm an executive board member, there's more avenues, something's been opened up for us. There's two things, this is twofold, what I'm finna come up to with you on. Is that the COG can develop us a full vendor policy if we ask them. Mr. Cleveland's right here, he can come up with that. He has a actual test team, uh group people who will do that. And it's no charge to us, that's part of us being on the East Texas Council of Governments. Then bringing in that full assessment is, y'all are looking for them. They have IT personnel and groups that'll come in and do that for us, that they'll cover and it's all taken care of, no charge also. And they'll help us execute getting our IT department where we need to be so we won't have that problem like we had with the last company. If we're willing to work with the COG and the judge will go back and forth with Mr. Cleveland and find out what problems assessments we need. And they'll come back and they'll help us with a full vendor policy and a full assessment of a security inside network documentation audit, just go through the whole uh IT department and see what can benefit Anderson County and help Anderson County as a whole. Is that right, Mr. Cleveland?
Yes, sir, and uh we'll be real upfront with you about what, anything that is outside our capable is just what I'm, if it's a standard IT assessment that we can discuss today, we have CEGIS qualified staff on staff now. Be happy to help me. And then for any of those things in terms of scope of work that we're uncomfortable doing, we'll tell you straight away. Based on what I'm hearing this morning, this looks like a pretty standard IT assessment.
And in the vendor policy.
Let me bring something to Mr. Prince's attention, okay? And Mr. Cleveland also, are you, are you familiar with uh Texas Association of Counties and their cybersecurity? We we actually have insurance through Texas Association of Counties for cybersecurity, okay? For the first three months that I was here in office, we had a complete forensic audit by Texas Association of Counties cybersecurity team, who was recognized by the governor's office, okay? To make determinations on what kind of problems we might have. So I want to make sure that that, you know, the court's somewhat aware that we had an audit. They went through everything we had. And they gave us a report. And so I'm just saying, that's something you may not have known.
I didn't know you had an audit and I don't know what it entails.
No court member of the judge was aware of it.
Well, so they understand?
I wasn't aware of it.
Okay, so so but when Andrea Beard spoke to the court, then that team that she had was a forensic team that went through our entire system to see if there were any threats or any any vulnerabilities that we had. Now, again, it I I'm not opposed to, for what you were talking about, to come in and look and and do an assessment of, do you see a vulnerability? Do we, do we not have fire protection here? Do we not have a firewall? We've been having those conversations. A lot of that stuff happened during that forensic audit, that firewalls were put in place. Things were changed, the recommendations that they made. The recommendations that they made, okay? And I know you you you're not aware of that stuff, okay? I'm trying to make you aware of it, so uh I I'm having to be kind of careful. Because I'm trying to protect the court and the county uh from a legal standpoint also, so some of this I can't talk about. That that I could maybe in a closed session, okay, with our attorneys, but uh essentially right now. We have not gotten certification from either company, they wiped our data from their servers. That's part of the agreement, and then we're gonna give them some equipment back. That's, now I'm telling the court exactly where we're at. We've given them multiple chances to come get their equipment, tell us a time and a date, they failed to show up. That's from our attorney to their attorney, okay? So we're kind of at a standstill right now and the ball's in their court.
I can appreciate that.
So anyway, I I, but I'm telling the court that, I want to make sure everybody's on the same page. But part of why I hadn't discussed a lot of this is I was trying to protect everybody, but this keeps coming up, so I'm I'm just gonna. Put some of it out there so everybody's on the same page and know that I'm not trying to.
Well, nobody, Judge, I don't think nobody accused you of doing anything, we're just, we're not hearing anything and we did find a lot of information out today, it was the first time we heard, any four of us heard of. Yeah, I'd like a copy of that report too that they're doing, you'd love to see that. We're responsible for Anderson County. That's right. We understand that.
And I understand.
And some things happened before, I was not aware of, never crossed my mind, wasn't looking for it, it was all brought to my attention, so now I'm more aware of something could happen. I want to be on top, I don't want somebody coming to me and say, Commissioner, you allow this to happen, I can't be dumb and say, I don't know nothing about I T. I'm aware things can happen. We looked into something, this is a simple solution, we pay insurance policies for our employees, this is less than a ten thousand dollar insurance policy the way I was looking at. No offense to you, no offense to the I T department. I mean, this is just an outside company who does work locally that we thought would be a good uh company, has good references. We have to look at it and give us not to where we stand.
Give us a good assessment of where we're at, exactly.
I would just like the court to give us, give us time to go through and let our attorneys look at the vendor policy. Try to get that in place before we enter it, because the thing is, if somebody touches that. I don't want somebody else accusing us of or another company that, oh, they messed it up. Do you understand where I'm at?
I really don't, how does, how does a company work?
If we give access to it to a another company, I don't want somebody that we're trying to work something out accusing that company and saying that that company.
I guess he's talking about the previous company that done something to.
And I think that's where we.
I need to go through the lawyers is what I'm trying to say without saying too much.
We got you. But I think where we're at today is the past history from these guys, like Mr. Dixon, the longest time, the long tenure he's been here with us, me, myself. And uh Commissioner here, Commissioner Hill, what we have is. We've experienced multiple I T problems and we keep coming back in the same place, the same place, the same place, the same place. And I understand that you're a new county judge, you're here, but I don't think we want you to take it all on your shoulders, we want to help and be a part of.
I think we showed that, Commissioner Mills, we did get in some help, he explained to us what the help is doing.
And so that's what we want to do.
You know, I wasn't aware of the new help, Secretary told us, y'all create him around introducing, nobody, I was not aware of that till I heard that. You showed what he's done, it's not that we don't support our I T department, not that we think Mike's doing a bad job, none of that. It's still Kevin Dixon as Commissioner is responsible for security of Anderson County stuff. And I'm aware that things can happen to make it unsecure. And we was looking for a simple solution, this is, in my opinion, is like an insurance policy. Now, as far as what they do to our computers that could get blamed on someone else, I wasn't aware of all that because he said they don't look at our data, they don't do nothing, they're checking.
Yeah, and we have, we, we're a very reputable comp- company, we have uh a host, I I get that, sir, I really do, and and we have. Relationships with two hundred plus school districts in Texas, we have relationship with numerous cities and counties here in Texas. Um, we carry cybersecurity insurance policies ourselves as well as liability policies, so if we were to do something untoward. Which we've never done and never been accused of doing in forty plus years of being in business. Um, we'll, we'll stand by uh and and we'll fix it if it if it's something we've done. Um, or we'll, we'll prove that it wasn't anything that we've done, we'll just, and we have no, we. We come alongside a lot of I T departments in in assessing these things, city of Palestine, we worked with them for over fifteen years. Uh, none of these other cities that long or longer, uh as well as uh Met Health, we're their I T group for uh. The area, all the area counties that they serve. So we we can come in alongside of I T departments and work with them, in fact, we we appreciate that, uh, we'll appreciate their input. Uh, they'll be, they can be right next to us as we're loading our our testing software, um, but we're not pulling, we're not pulling data, we're pulling information. We're just about the systems, about the infrastructure, we're gonna take pictures, we're gonna look at equipment, we're gonna check dates and ages of things, we're gonna check. See if there's any vulnerabilities internally, our scans will do that for us, we'll, we'll look at the firewalls. Look at the rules that are set and see if there are 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 potential instances, if you choose to do additional fifteen hundred dollars for the. Penetration test, that we'll see if there's anything uh that can get into your network from outside, if we feel like that's a next necessary step after we look at the firewall. And y'all approve that, then we can do that as well, we have a third party company we use for that purpose because that's what they specialize in is penetration testing. So we recognize where our strengths are and where they end, and it's always good to have a third party company that that's uh testing you, so that's what we do, we use the company Al Waco to do that. So um, I I don't, I'm not sure what a vendor policy may or may not do for you, um.
The vendor policy outlines the, and whether it's you or another company. It outlines certain parameters that, just like you came in, you said that that everybody was vetted as for C G S training and all that kind of stuff. So in in uh criminal, I guess criminal background checks and things like that. But we need, we need a vendor policy that outlines that because uh to a certain extent, well, I'm not gonna get into it. But would you agree that insider threat can be one of your worst threats?
Certainly, it's, it's probably, uh, people are your, are your, are your, where your, your weakest points are.
So I'll leave it at that, but but we need to have a policy. So that whoever we contract with to do what you're talking about doing or any other resource for I T. And they know what the parameters are. And because in the past, there was no contract, that's the whole problem. And state statute under two seventy one subchapter F required a contract, okay?
Yes, sir, we won't do anything without a contract, I promise you.
Have a contract, right?
Right.
See, that's what I'm talking about.
And 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 that's what that piece of paper is, is a contract outlines exactly what we will do and would not do for the county.
And I'm just trying, just like the commissioners, I want to get us to a better place. So that we can all be confident in what we got, and so I'm I'm not opposed to an audit, I don't, I don't want anybody to think that.
How long would it take to get this policy in place?
We've, we've been working on it, I've actually talked to county judges, I've talked to uh. Well, look, they've been talking, they've been talking to other counties and and trying to assess, you know, uh. It's, it's funny, but you know what, there isn't a whole lot of counties that have got a vendor policy in place, that's the problem. But but am I wrong? I'm right on spot, okay?
Well, we work with a couple of counties, I haven't ever, ever been given a vendor policy from either the counties that I've personally worked with.
But we have Mr. Cleveland here and I'll be back over there Thursday for another meeting.
Well, all I'm asking is a little time.
Help us with a vendor policy.
Uh, that's fine, all I'm, all I want to do, and and he can review the one we got, they can look at it with their people, I don't care. I just want to have a vendor policy in place before we let anybody touch anything in this county, and I think y'all agree that's not a bad idea.
No, okay, what kind of time would we?
Let's, let's, let's have it, let's have it, can we do it by the regular meeting?
Can, can I make one suggestion?
Okay.
Uh, come on up here to the mic.
Mike.
So Mark can hear you.
To the mic, up the mic. Come to the mic, Mike.
Mike, come to the mic.
Can I make one suggestion, and this coming from just, this is all open record.
Mr. Francis is our I T.
Um, yes, sir, um, I would like to say that being open record as we are right now. Any vulnerabilities that you or Mr. Prince might identify. If we talk about them like we're talking about right now, that puts it into the public and then puts it as a threat. I just would try to say that if it's, if we do get, that we would go into a special session.
I don't disagree with you.
That's the only thing that I have. And and I I have no problems with anybody doing a uh an assessment for us, I'm I'm open to that. Um, but we have already also talked to several other companies, um, trying to get something kind of like what uh what he's talking about. A relationship between us and another company, so that way if we have questions, we have issues or something, we can go to somebody that's gonna be a little higher knowledge than what we are.
Well, we didn't hear the conversation that far with Mr. Prince, but I think that's something that their company does offer. And they're similarly local and they take care, but anyway, we didn't get into that discussion with him because first we just wanted to see, kind of give you a report card. If you come back with all A's, great gift, not, here's some things we might need to check in because don't come to me because I can't help you out.
And that's why.
So hopefully we're in a better place on information then.
We are, but I would like to say, if it's all right, if we could, go ahead and ask Mike to reach out. And you to Mr. Cleveland with the call and get them to help us with the vendor policy, if they have the re, the access there and the resources to do it.
We can take, we've, we've, we've already actually drafted a first copy, so we can take it to them and see.
Email it to Mr. Cleveland and let him take you with the staff and go.
Would that be a problem with you, Mr. Prince, to come back at a later court date?
What?
If. I don't think it happens. I mean, you, you, if you decided today that we we accept this to pass it pending on the placement of that uh. You know, policy being in place, it could maybe take two weeks, it might take a month, but then he'd be notified that he could perform his, his uh, you know, assessment on what we got going on.
Send me a P O or sign this document and and whenever you tell us, you're ready to go.
Come back, you've already given us presentation and what you're asking, and a quote, so is this good for a few weeks?
You put a signature, yes, sir, you put a signature on that and we're good to go.
So.
Thank you, Mike, thank you, Mr. Prince.
Mr. Prince, thank you for being here.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir, this, this is information that I guess we needed to share, we were, we were almost to that point anyway before this came up.
I I completely understand, I'm just happy to work with the county in any way we can.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
All right, is it all right to pass it to our regular meeting?
Well, what about the recommendation of the policy?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm telling, we're gonna do that.
Okay, as long as we give uh them, before he leaves today, Mike give him what he's kind of got drafted up, let him start working on it. All right, thank you. Yes, sir, uh.
And I can, I, he'll be back this week, so I should be able to call him. I'd just like to, yeah, vendor policy in place before we approve.
Vendor policy, okay, I mean, if one of us, I can even call Eric just to see, to make sure that he can step in and do that if he's not gonna access our uh data anyhow, just checking out the equipment, isn't that what he said?
But I need to talk, I just need to talk to him in general from a legal perspective about. Where where we're at, he's been sending emails and no response, so.
Okay, so there's.
We'll try to reach out one more time and then see what he says about.
So there's something else.
Touching our system because.
We hadn't had a chance to be brought up too, that we need to put this on hold to the next meeting, is that what you said?
That's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking. At our regular, at our regular meeting, our next regular meeting.
Mr. Dixon.
You want to pass it, we are looking, proposing to pass it.
I'll put it back on, I'll put it back on for the next regular meeting.
And it'll be intact, if it's in the middle of the week, it can go on through without waiting for a meeting.
Sir.
If we go ahead and put it through today, if that's something we want to propose to court, and then if it passes in the middle of a week between, you know, if it comes back, we get the policy in place or whatever.
The court has to approve the policy first, though.
Yeah, I guess it would.
Yeah.
I can have both of them on you, Judge.
Okay, uh, then on my recommendation, wait till the next meeting. That'll be on the fourteenth. Vendor policy and then have the vendor policy before this agenda item, then if we accept the vendor policy and get one in place, then we can move on with this. But like I say, if we can have that done by the.
We're, we're, we're right at having the vendor policy, I mean, right now, I mean, that was my plan.
Well, we can, I mean, one thing we say about that, we would like to have more information because let's say you're over it, but the court's still responsible for Anderson County's I T. I mean, it's gonna come back on all five of us, so we definitely want to know what's going on and not be left out.
Yes, well, part of it was my concern with legal, so.
Well, mine, I'm concerned about legal too, so there is some legal. You know, we sit around them conferences, everybody bellyacking about, you know, being hacked and whole ransoms and, you know, I mean, I don't know if we're in that position or not. But if there is legal stuff, like say a court could be made aware of, especially so that we could know.
So are y'all okay with passing till the fourteenth?
Yes, sir.
They're on the fourteen.
Uh, it'll be on there. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Dixon, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chapin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so order.